I'd like to call the regular session meeting order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ramonek.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Here.
May we please stand? Can I please invite Pastor Jay Blake to give an indication? May we please stand?
Mayor, if I could, please.
At the end of this, we should...
Correct. I got you at the end of this.
Thank you. Dear God, we know that when Solomon became King of Israel, he asked for an understanding heart to guide among his people. And not only did you grant him that understanding heart, but you gave him wisdom above all others that he would be able to rule and rule well. As we look around this room tonight, we thank you for your wisdom that you have bestowed upon each and every one of us. Let that wisdom guide us as we decide tonight on the things that you have put at our charge. We thank you that we can ask you for this, and by faith, we believe that you will grant this in the name of Christ who saves. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could, could I ask everybody to stand for a moment in silence in memory of Richie Ramos.
Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we do have resolutions to add. Resolution item number 10, resolution of the City of Millville and the County of Cumberland, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement and Purchase and Sale Agreement with PD Millville Redeveloper LLC for property identified as Block 124, proposed lot 16.06 on Buck Shootum Road. Resolution item number 11, resolution of the City of Millville and the County of Cumberland, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement and Purchase and Sale Agreement with PD Millville Redeveloper II LLC for property identified as Block 136, proposed lot 1.04 at 1400 Dividing Creek Road. And resolution item number 12, resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with the City of Millville and New Jersey State Policeman's Benevolent Association.
Thank you. This is an open public meeting. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the midst of this meeting. Public comment on agenda items only. If anybody from the public would like to comment on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns. Please limit those concerns to approximately five minutes. Thank you. Tamara, can you tap on the microphone and see if it's on? There we go.
Is it on now? Okay. Tamara Davis, Millville. I have two questions, one on each of the bond ordinance. My concern on, actually on both of them is, is the items that, the improvement items that are being purchased through the bond, are they within the timeline of the particular bond? So, for instance, I'm very concerned about, on 18.3, the bond that's 2.2 million, there is a bond, there is an item for $45,000 for a purchase of information technology, including without limitation legible network improvements and equipment. Why would you be bonding $45,000 for technology that most likely will not outlive the life of this bond, which is probably going to be obsolete by the time you purchase it or even get it done? That's my first concern. I'm also concerned, and I'm not saying that the police nor the firefighters need this equipment. I am not saying that. My concern is, are we paying for the bond and they're not going to exceed the lifetime of the bond? We just bought cameras, like, I think in 2019 or 2020. I know they were purchased with grants. So, that's not even five years. So, now you're proposing another 440,000 bonding. You're going to be able to bond, buy cameras. I don't know how many police cameras that is, and I'm a little surprised that you haven't put in the budget, like, a rolling program where you're buying, like, five or 10 cameras every year so they're constantly being replenished. And that also includes the SCBA's. Because once you start bonding for items that are not going to exceed the life of the bond, then we're just paying for, we're just, we're not getting anything from it. And the second one, 18.4, which I'm all for bonding for the improvements, but I'm concerned about the life of the dump truck and plow for 200,000. And the life, the estimated years of usefulness for this particular bond is 35 years. So, will that particular truck exceed that 35-year usefulness? And in the first bond, 18.3, the average lifespan is, or the average years of usefulness is about 14 years. So, that would be anybody concerned. It's not very good fiscal responsibility to get bonds for things that are are not going to be there for the perpetual life of that, or not perpetual, but for that complete life of that bond. So, thank you.
Patricia Kears for Nine Peach Drive. I have a question on the bond, or the ordinance on 18.3. I'm all for upgrading and improving and repairing. What I should do is I'm going to ask this instead. Is this bond for the repair of the Riverwalk at all?
I'll answer any questions for bonding for my department.
And I'll take care of my department.
When we talk about the bond.
Correct.
Okay, so...
I'll answer mine when comments...
Okay, so I'm just asking if that's part of this bond? And it... And I thought there were grants available through the DEP that would help with the repair of the River Trail. I thought there was a million-dollar bond out there that was non-matching, so it would be a flat million dollars that could go for the repair of that. And I wondered why we weren't pursuing that instead of bonding for the repairs. My next question has to do with the two resolutions that were added for the development out on Buck Shootum Road. I'm just asking who the owners are of PD Millville Redeveloper LLC and who the owner is of PD Millville Redeveloper II LLC. Thank you.
Seeing no one further, I will close public comment on agenda items only. Wait till your...
My time?
Yes, please. Presentations seen none, bills, please.
Make a motion and pay the bills.
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramonek?
Yes. Minutes?
Yes, we need a motion to approve the minutes for the work session, closed session, and regular meeting minutes dated August 6, 2025, and the work session and regular meeting minutes dated August 19, 2025.
Make motion.
Second.
Motion second for approval of the minutes. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramonek?
Yes. Petitions and letters, please.
Petitions and letters, item number one. Motion to receive and file resignation letter from Keith Rule from the planning board.
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion second, petition and letters, item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramonek?
Yes.
Petitions and letters, item number two. Motion to receive and file mayor's letter of appointment of planning board member.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion second, petition and letter, item number two. Any comments? Yes, I'd like to thank Nicholas for reaching out to join the planning board. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramonek?
Yes. Reports of commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to make a motion to receive and file the police and fire department reports for the month of August 2025.
Second motion.
We have motion second to receive and file the police and fire department reports for August of 2025. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramonek?
Yes.
And I think that we all are aware in town, and we're definitely aware up here, that we lost Officer Richie Ramos last week. All the services will be taking place tomorrow. He fought a long, hard health battle, and he's going to be missed. Please keep your thoughts and prayers for his family. We will all be at his services along with many other people, I imagine, tomorrow. And that's all I've got there. Mayor, if you would like, I said I would answer Mrs. Davis's question. If you would like, the fire chief is here, and he could make that clear.
Proceed.
Chief, would you like to answer for us, please?
Sure. Is that good?
Perfect.
Okay, as far as the SCBA are concerned, at the end of 2026, our current SCBA are going to be 15 years old. And after 15 years, New Jersey Department of Transportation, the lifespan of those cylinders, we can no longer have them hydrostatically tested, which we currently do every five years. At the end of the lifespan of those, we can't use them anymore. So, we can't fill the bottles. Our current SCBA do not meet the NFPA 1981 regulations. So, that's why we're looking to replace our SCBA that are going to be 15 years old at the end of 2026, which, if the bond is passed now, we have to place an order. We don't get them. And then the newer bottles, our current air compressor only goes up to 5,000 pounds, and it will not fill the new bottles up to the required 5,500 PSI that we need. So, that's why we're looking at replacing all the SCBA. Currently, we have 60, which we don't really have 60 because we are using parts and pieces from some of the ones that we do have to keep the rest in service. And this bond is to only use 40, or to purchase 40 more as opposed to 60. We only need to maintain 40, which is one per riding position for each piece of apparatus we have.
Everybody, everybody got that?
Any questions on that?
There wasn't a question, no.
Pardon me?
Her question, I think, was about the cameras for the police.
Well, I'm going to take care of the cameras.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Because she did question the SCBA's also. Is that good on the SCBA's? Pardon me?
Not my decision?
Well, that's the explanation. We can't fight fires after next year without them. On the cameras, we are very limited on cameras. These cameras, the style and manufacture, they are not even serviceable. So, we are using cameras between shifts. We don't have enough to keep going. Cameras that we are getting now are, have all the capabilities of recordings, of sending recordings, because everything's got to be recorded. Prosecutor's office wants things for different... Right now, we are working in a bad situation with our camera situation. You had a great idea. Why aren't we buying cameras now on a rotating basis? I would totally agree with you. It hasn't been done. Maybe that's something that you or I will approach the next commission with after January. Because, yes, I agree with you. We should be doing a rolling regeneration replacement of cameras so that we don't get into a situation like this again. So, I thank you for bringing that. With that, that's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Sui?
Yeah, so first, I don't know. This may be out of order. You can tell me I'm out of order in two minutes. So, as I get, as the years go by, I get older, fatter, grayer, uglier. And my wife still seems to have that glow she did when I met her many years ago. And today is her birthday.
It's your birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
So, you can see that I listened to the wisdom part of that speech.
I heard that this morning, so...
Smooth as always.
I'll answer your question now, Ms. Kears, about the bond for, the bond for the Riverwalk. You are correct. We did apply for a grant with the DEP. We had part of the DEP helping us with that grant. Another part of the DEP says that little building across the river for the pump station is on green acres land. And until we find an offset for that, we can't get the grant to fix the Riverwalk. And we've been working on that for a couple of years to get that figured out. In the meantime, the erosion is still occurring, making it worse. So, rather than wait for that grant, and then the cost goes higher because more erosion happens, more the Riverwalk gets eaten up by the river, we want to apply for it now. We want to apply for the bond now, get the bond, fix the problem before it gets any worse. And instead of $250,000, it costs $700,000. So, that's why that's in there. We took some stuff out of parks and public property for bonding. One of the things we took, we took out was another four-wheel drive in a pickup truck. The reason being, we can use UEZ funds as part of our Green Team grant to get the truck that they will need to do their duties on the Green Team. So, again, we're using UEZ money to offset expenses that would otherwise have to come out of tax revenue. You asked a question about bonding, and I'll just kind of explain it now, how I look at it. There are certain things we need, and it's kind of like if your washing machine breaks. If you wait, you can probably buy one in a couple of years. But you need a washing machine. We have several expenses coming up. Employee contracts, the rise in health benefits cost. There's $3 million in fund balance, but that's going to get eaten up. So, if we don't do it this way, we won't be able to do it. That's the simple explanation. I don't like it. I don't like bonding for things that I know aren't going to last for the term of the bond because in the end, that puts you in a hole if you keep doing it. So, it has to stop. But you see, we're trying to work around that with many other things. But for now, that's, that's the necessity. We need the cameras. We need the firefighting equipment. We need the Riverwalk fixed before it gets worse. We need the other trucks for plowing snow. We need all that equipment. Believe me, I'm a tightwad here. I wouldn't be voting for any of this if I didn't think we needed it. So, that's that. All right, so, past Saturday, we hosted the 34th Annual Downtown Car Show. We had 241 cars registered and filled High Street from main to broad. We want to thank the following sponsors: New Jersey UEZ, TerraVestor Property Management LLC, National Highway Products, United Uniforms, Chopper Automotive, Colonial Florist and Gifts, Texas Roadhouse in Millville. Also want to thank the men and women of the Parks Department, Streets and Roads, Fleet Department, Police Department, Records Department, Sewer Department, Engineering Department, anybody else I missed. I'm sure the fire department was out inspecting whatever food truck was there. So, thank you to them, too. And this event took the cooperation of many departments, and it really was a successful car show this year. It was really a great show. Lastly, we would like to congratulate Carlos Barrios, who took best in show with his 1995 baby blue and white Chevy Bel Air. Upcoming events: On Thursday, September 26, the city has partnered with Ocean First Bank and the Holly City Development Corporation and the authority to hold a Center City cleanup from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Everybody's going to gather for lunch at the First United Methodist Church, located at 201 North Second Street, and spend the afternoon cleaning up the neighborhood. On Saturday, September 27, the Recreation Department will hold their annual baby show. All children must be four years or younger and must be from Millville. Registration's going to start at noon, and the show will begin at 1:00 p.m. sharp. All right, I'll save the other part for closing comments. So, with that progress...
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. Commissioner Kasabun?
All right, we are in the middle of brush collection. It began on September the 2nd. They've collected 115 tons of brush so far, and they're currently in the third ward. If anyone didn't get their brush out in time and you missed that collection, you can go to the compost facility at Cedar Street, 999. On Tuesdays, Thursdays, or Saturdays, 7:00 a.m. to 2:45 p.m. Loose leaves season starts November the 1st to December the 31st. You can start putting your loose leaves out the curb two weeks, the last two weeks of October because they will begin collecting them on November the 3rd. Any questions and concerns, contact Streets and Roads, 825-7000, extension 7388. Also, just want to piggyback on Commissioner Sui. The Downtown 34th Annual Car Show was a huge success. We had a lot of positive feedback from the participants and the spectators from that show. Thank you to the parks, Streets and Roads, fleet, garage, Millville Police Department, and everyone else who worked hard to put this event together. Next year will be our 35th anniversary for the Downtown Millville Show, and we hope to experience the same turnout and the weather we had this year. If any business would like to be a sponsor of next year's car show, please contact Sam Cruz at 825-7000, extension 7304. That's for Streets and Roads.
Thank you, Commissioner Kasabun. Vice Mayor Watson?
Make a motion to receive and file the tax collector's report for the month of August 2025.
Second motion.
Make a motion second, receive and file. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramonek?
Yes.
For the capital items, it's kind of been a while since we actually got the opportunity to speak with all the department heads. Back in, like, April or May, we brought these items forward. And unfortunately, we weren't able to get them on the agenda until today. And I want to thank the CFO and her department for putting this together for us. As far as the items, as I said, we've had contact with all the commissioners here and their department heads to try to evaluate what each department really needed. And that's the list that you see before you. If I remember correctly, from Streets and Roads, you know, the heavy-duty dump truck, you know, we're supposed to have five on the road ready to roll. We only have three right now. So, if you want snow removed, we're going to need a dump truck. The SCBA and the breathing apparatus, thank you, Chief, for explaining that. It's well-needed equipment for our team. Parks and public property, thank you, Commissioner Sui, for explaining that. For police, again, as Commissioner Hewitt spoke, it's, we need the equipment. We have to have it. It's not something that we can just go without. Unfortunately, we have to find ways to get these things, and this is the way we do it. We did table the water and sewer capital list. We're going to reevaluate that. So, that's kind of where we are. For the wastewater treatment plant, grit chamber, and bar screen, Capola will provide estimates of chain order values if accepted by the commission. We will be requesting to consider additional change orders to the project for ultimate approval by H2 loans, the NGDP construction element. On tonight's agenda, we have ACOM for engineering services for the dewatering project. It's a not-exceed amount of 366,000. This is to provide engineering services during the construction associated with the Millville Wastewater Treatment Plant's solid dewatering upgrade project, which will include basic engineering services for construction administration, including attending pre-bid meetings and pre-construction meetings, attending monthly construction progress meetings, and site visits, submittal reviews, response to requests for information, and potential change orders. In contact with South State for the paving for the Fulton Street force main install. We have them scheduled for September 17, reconstruction of Fulton Street from Park Avenue to the first downstream manhole. The limits of the 18-inch gravity line replacement with the 18-inch C900, DR18 Gravity Transmission Main. Yeah. Where the force main meets the downstream manhole. Engineering Water are reviewing progress, and they're going to be doing a meeting with, for the project update for the water meter upgrade on September 16, 2025. And I believe that's all I had. Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There's a zoning board scheduled for October 2 at 6 o'clock here. Planning Board note will be Tuesday, October 14. That is Tuesday at 6:30. There will be a public hearing draft for the Comprehensive Annual Performance Report for the CDBG program year 2024 on Thursday, September 18 at 5:30 p.m. And the city commission chambers on the fourth floor. Reminder that in person and through September 23 hours on the fifth floor, written comments may be submitted until 4:00 p.m. on September 2023. On September 6, we had our Holly City Fest that was well-attended as well, seeing all the many, many multiple businesses that were all up and down High Street. Great to see in great weather as well. As always, for 24 years, we have honored and remembered those that lost their lives on 9/11. We had a ceremony on Thursday evening. It's always hard touching just to talk about it and just to understand the gravity that, of that moment 24 years ago. I hope each and every one of you remembered where you were, what you were doing. I was just a young kid, but I remember it very vividly. So, thank you for all of you that attended, and all those that were there and thought about it in your homes and during your days. Next, we had our car show that was mentioned as well. That was, we couldn't ask for better weather that day. Like Commissioner Sui said, there was, you know, over 240 cars registered. It did stretch from High Street all the way down to Broad. I remember seeing Patty and Greg there, and we had a 10-foot parking distance and less than that in between cars. Thankful for all the crews and guys that was able to coordinate, to work effectively in organizing because that's the hardest thing for a car show, is parking the cars and making them all equally distanced, equally spaced, and angled perfectly. It was a very nice weather day. I was there since 6:45 in the morning, helping out, understanding, and seeing how this whole project goes. And only a little sniffle of a mean, mean guy in a car, but he stayed for the whole show. So, he wasn't that bad. But thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed it. Upcoming, we do have the Cut International Film Fest. It is happening this weekend from September 19 to the 20th. For you, 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 though, that don't know, Cut was founded to celebrate storytelling and the medium of motion pictures, but not, but limited to short stories. The short film, like documentaries, has become a great way for larger groups of people to tell their stories, not reliant, reliant on huge budgets or massive crews. A small group of talented creatives can craft a tale of renaissance and authenticity. Our goal is to celebrate those stories and give them a venue to shine. I know Commissioner Sui has attended them in the past. I hope all the commissioners can go and enjoy those series of short films. They're truly amazing. But also, what's special about this year is they are doing a 25-minute video of the history of the Levoi Theater in downtown Millville. If you are a member of the Atlantic City Press, you can see we're front-page news about a month ago, maybe. So, I'm looking forward to being there on Friday night and hopefully, not Saturday night, I got an event, looking forward to be there on the 19th. So, see you there. Ordinances in the second reading.
Ordinance for second reading, item number one. An ordinance demanding the municipal code of the City of Millville Motor Vehicle and Traffic Regulations, Parking Reserve for Handicapped Persons, 514 Vine Street.
Make motion?
Second.
We have motion second for ordinance in the number one. Ordinance in the second reading, item number one. I will open up public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns. Seeing no one, I will close public hearing. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramonek?
Yes. Ordinances in the first reading.
Ordinance for first reading, item number one. An ordinance of the City of Millville and the County... An ordinance of the City of Millville and the County of Cumberland adopting an amendment to the redevelopment plan entitled James R. Hurley Industrial Park Redevelopment Plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 40A:12A-1.
Make motion.
Second.
We have motion second, ordinance in the first reading, item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Ordinance for first reading, item number two. An ordinance amending ordinance 18-2025, an ordinance approving an agreement of sale that would authorize the City of Millville to convey a deed of easement to the state of New Jersey.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion second, ordinance in first reading, item number two. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Okay, before we introduce the next ordinance, we do need to go a little bit out of order and approve resolution item number one. That's resolution to amend the capital budget.
Make motion to approve resolution item number one.
Second motion.
We have motion second on item number one, resolution item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Now ordinance for first reading, item number three. A bond ordinance authorizing various capital improvements and acquisitions appropriating $2,030,000 to pay the costs thereof, authorizing the issuance of $1,928,500 of bonds to finance the appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion second for ordinance in the first reading, item number three. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes. Continue with resolutions, please.
Resolution item number two. A resolution to affirm the City of Millville's civil rights policy with respect to all officials, appointees, employees, prospective employees, volunteers, independent contractors, and members of the public that come into contact with municipal employees, officials, and volunteers.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second on resolution item number two. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Resolution item number three. Resolution authorizing tax and utility adjustments.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have motion second on resolution item number three. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Resolution item number four. Resolution to certify to the Local Finance Board of the State of New Jersey that all governing body members have reviewed the annual audit.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion second on resolution item number four. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Resolution item number five. Resolution authorizing a professional service agreement with ACOM Technical Services, Inc. for engineering services during the Millville Wastewater Treatment Plant's solids dewatering upgrade project.
Make motion.
Second motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make motion. I do have certification of funds. The amount of 366,000, signed by our CFO, Tricia McGahey.
And I second the motion.
We have motion second with certification of funds on resolution item number five. Any comments? You explained it pretty well before. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Resolution item number six. Resolution supporting the establishment and operation of a facility for a Class 5 cannabis retailer on premises occupied by the Vault Dispensary Millville LLC, located at 901 North Second Street, Millville, Block 290, Lot 1.
Make motion. Second motion.
We have motion second on resolution item number six. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Epstein.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Resolution item number seven. Resolution authorizing the award of a state contract for trash cans for Buck Park.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
Motion second on resolution item number seven. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Resolution item number eight. Resolution amending resolution 185-2025. Resolution authorizing purchase of temporary utility and construction easements regarding the Route 49 Bridge over the Maurice River Superstructure Replacement.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second on resolution item number eight. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Resolution item number nine. Resolution appointing Brian Mills as alternate one member of the Millville Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion second on resolution item number nine. Any comments? Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Mills for stepping up and applying to be alternate member for the zoning board. Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Resolution item number 10. Resolution of the City of Millville and the County of Cumberland, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement and Purchase and Sale Agreement with PD Millville Redeveloper LLC for property identified as Block 124, Prop. Lot 16.06 on Buck Shudham Road.
Move the resolution. Second motion.
We have motion second for resolution item number 10. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Resolution item number 11. Resolution of the City of Millville and the County of Cumberland, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the Redevelopment Agreement and Purchase and Sale Agreement with PD Millville Redeveloper 2 LLC for property identified as Block 136, Prop. Lot 1.04 at 1400 Dividing Creek Road.
Move the resolution. Second motion.
We have motion second on resolution item number 11. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes.
Resolution item number 12. Resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the City of Millville and New Jersey State Policemen's Benevolent Association.
Make motion.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion second on resolution item number 12. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Ramnick?
Yes. New business, seeing none. We have now reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name, and address your concerns, and please limit your comments to approximately five minutes. Thank you.
Tamara Davis. I'm just here to do a public service announcement from the Board of Elections. The mail-in ballots are being mailed out this week, so those of you that get mail-in ballots, you should be getting them shortly. I do want to point out, and there was a press release that came out from the city clerk regarding the layout of the particular ballot for Millville. It will be three pages. One page is double-sided, which includes the state and legislative races, followed by the school board on the back. And then a page by its, by itself is the city commission. So please make sure if you are doing mail-in ballots that you turn in all, both pieces of paper. Also, be very careful and read the directions very, very carefully. We're asking you to fill in the bubbles properly with a ink pen, blue or black. Try to avoid using pencil, red ink, purple ink, or whatever crayon may be on your table, because it's very difficult to read through the machines. And also be very cognizant of how many people you are to vote for. So for the city commission, you can vote no more than five. If you vote for too many positions, that race on your ballot will not be counted. All right, so if you vote for six, that race will not count. Completely not count. And that includes any write-ins. And if you do choose to write anybody in, please do make sure that they are actually a real person that exists on the voting rolls, and try to use their names, full names if you know. You have that right as well. That's for any race, you know, you could do that. Since the ballot is of three pages, those of you that do vote by machine, it will take longer to print. So you'll have to be patient, especially on the day of Election Day, because that usually gets a little, there's more people that vote on Election Day. So it will take slightly longer to print. It is not the fault of the poll workers. That is the way the ballot is designed, and the ballot prints double-sided. So actually, there will be, even the blank side will print out. Okay, so don't be quick to grab it off the printer and then, because you will jam up the printer. So I highly urge you, those of you that do vote by machine, to take advantage of early voting. And you can vote, no matter what city you live in, you can vote in one of three locations. The first location in Millville is the Women's Club, 300 E Street. The second location there is in Bridgeton, which used to be, which, which used to be called the Bridgeton Senior Center, and now it's called the All Sports Museum of Southern New Jersey. It is behind the, the Bridgeton High School Football Stadium, as you go towards the park. And then the last location, and this happens to be a new location, is in Violent, and it's the Violent Fire Headquarters on 400 West Plum Street. So take advantage of any of those locations, starting on October 25th until November 2nd. So the, the, the times to do early voting is from 10 to 8, and on Sunday, it is 10 to 6. Okay, so keep that in mind, especially those of you, people that vote by machine. And also, one last thing, the last day to register is October 14th. New Jersey does not have same-day voting, where you register on the same day and can vote. So if you want to register and you know you're not registered, or you, even if you're not sure, you could call the Board of Elections and you can get registered to vote. And if you have any other questions, please do not try to answer them on Facebook, or put them out there. Call the Board of Elections. Election laws are very complex, okay, and very long, all right? And there's a lot of twists and turns, so please do not be afraid to call the Board of Elections. They're there to help you, or even go visit them. They're on Route 49 in Hopewell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I would close public comment. Seeing someone else, I will keep it open.
My name is Campbell, and I'm at 408 E Street. I wanted just to address 19, Resolution 19-6. It's in regard to the establishment and operation of a facility for cannabis retail. The thought here is that Millville is 44.3 square miles big. And of all the place to put a retail cannabis, it's within one block of a charter school. That doesn't make sense. I'm sure that when we make decisions, there's, there's a balance. You know, you, you gain some, you lose some. But I think in the long term, we lose more than we gain by putting it in a location like this. I, I don't know if there was a study done to look at the community impact and where that leads us, but is this a Fiat complete? I mean, is this a done deal? Can, can this be examined to see whether or not it's in our overall best interest in the long term? And who best would be able to address that?
We'll, we'll address all your questions at the end when we...
I see. Okay, well, that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know how Anthony DeSantis, I know how important cannabis and the retail is to the city. And I remember there was a time that the charter school was the main issue. So I have a very intelligent commission here who has their best interest at heart for the city of Millville. And being that that's the case, why would you allow, Ms. Casabun, as a former member of the school system, this is also directed to your opinion, because I have three girls of my own, why would anyone allow retail? Excuse me? It's okay. So why would anybody allow retail in an area where children cross the street and drive in front of that property? Did anyone ever think that that location is actually too close to the school? Being that children walk right through it, and that there's a bus stop located on that property? I think it's something that you should consider and reconsider, because that is not the ideal location for a cannabis, for cannabis. And if you have to, we can perhaps, you know, invite the state to give their opinion, because, you know, you're putting children's lives at risk. And I remember there was a time up here at the dais when it was actually a question. It was very close to a school. And that was only growing and behind closed doors, and it wasn't open to the public, and no children were around. And I remember also at one point, Kurt helped me remember, my memory's going, but, you know, there was a big whoop-de-doo that there was a smell of marijuana in that area, that the police came out, because somebody was growing marijuana, and that everybody was concerned because of the, because of the closeness to the school. Now, like I said, I'm not the brightest guy in the room. You know, sometimes I think of myself as the dumbest one here for going what I'm going through, because I can't make any sense of it. So on one hand, about a year ago, you're stating that that location is not suitable for cannabis because of the proximity to the school. And that was, again, behind closed doors, walled, security, ventilation, impossible to get out. But now, you five, the five commissioners have the, the power of to place cannabis anywhere in the city, any location, and you have to put it a block away from a school? Do you have children? Do you want your kids walking in front of it? I don't. And what type of people are going there? Have you seen some of them? Yes, there are upper enchilons in some areas. Can we say the same thing about Millville? We already have a problem at the liquor store. Why do we need another problem over here, next to residential housing? So what you're trying to tell me is that there's no other location where you can place retail cannabis, preferably within a commercial area. So that's number one. And I'd like to thank you, thank you for taking that time out to hear me out on that. Because I do have kids, and I'm against cannabis for, for children, or anything that promotes drugs to minors, okay? And that's my point, and I'm staying to it. I don't mind growing it for adults behind closed doors, but that's where it ends. Secondly, I wanted to just thank everyone here for their help, and I mean that sincerely. We've made a lot of progress, and on our project, we expect to get a clean bill of health from the DEP in December. Two areas have already been approved, and we're waiting for our third one. I just had a meeting with our group doing, doing the environmental remediation. Once that's completed, then we can move forward with construction or whatnot, and finalize the demolition. Unfortunately, where's Tom? He's not here. He's a former DEP guy. He could explain it better. But unfortunately, when you have the DEP, DEP involved, you have to follow their guidelines, just as if you were the fire marshal or the police department. And which, Kurt, you know I opened the door many times, and I've invited everyone to, I mean, to look at the facility. So we're trying to cooperate, and we're trying to help as much as possible. And anything we can do to make it more transparent, we will. Regarding 10 Buck Street, that building's gonna, we have a quote, we have a demo company. We will, we will be filing paperwork on it for the demolition of that property. And we're going to put up a nice, beautiful, state-of-the-art, two-story building there. And I think everybody's going to be happy with what's going to go there. Main Street. Main Street is, we have some issues that have to be worked through. Main Street. Main Street is, we have some issues that have to be worked through, and as soon as those issues are done, we have the equipment in our warehouse, you can come by and take a look at it. We're gonna be filing for any permits and everything required, and we'll finish that. Okay, but...
Please wrap it up, DeSantis.
Yeah, yeah, give me a minute, please. So Main Street, that's all that's left over there. So we're waiting for the architects to submit the plan and pull the permits. But like I mentioned, we have just one issue that we have to resolve with the city, and once that's done, we're good to go, we got the green light. Alright, the money's been set aside, the project's set aside, and I hope the city's gonna be happy with what we're doing for them, because that's a project we're doing for the city. If you have any questions, if you want to visit anything, like I said, my doors are always open. You could stop by my office, because you want to go take a tour of the facility, I welcome you, Ms. Kosseboon. You haven't been there, Mr. Watson, you haven't been either. I'd like to invite you guys. You haven't been there either. So I'd like to invite the three of you there to take a look at it at your convenience. At least you could see pictures of what was and what is. And finally, we are, we did retain Bill to do a video of the before and after, and we're gonna make it available to the city as part of the city's growth, as our investment, which there's a substantial amount of money in there, that you could use in order to attract other businesses into the area. I'm sorry to go over. Thank you for your time, sincerely. And like I said, if you have anything, my door's open, just give me a call or stop by. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeSantis.
Hi, Tom McGinty, just want to make a quick comment. Thank you, Tamara, for your input on the SCBAs and the cameras. And, you know, these things are high-tech. There's constant maintenance on all the gear for the fire department. You know, I know how that goes. Cameras. I'm, I have a lot of cameras, of all different types and whatever. And I'm kinda hip to some of the stuff that people use in other technologies, including the police department. The rolling, constant replacement of cameras, it kinda sounds like a great idea, but one of the things that possibly you can run into is, these things, you buy them, and two months later, there's another model out, there's another this out, there's an improvement, whatever. Most of these are either Wi-Fi or Bluetooth to tie into different things, so then there's software involved, and there's chargers involved and everything. Well, I kinda see where it makes sense, where you have to buy everything all at once. That way, when you have to have it maintained, you're maintaining all the same model of camera, you're dealing with all the same software, you're dealing with all the same upgrades and so forth and so on. I may be wrong, you know, I haven't done a, you know, in-depth look at it, but a lot of these things, laptops, cameras, you name it, the, they're made to be obsolete the minute you walk out the door with them. So although it's a great idea, and, you know, it's something that somebody should look into, you know, there's, in the end, you might find out that it would be more frustration, and it's worth to try to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinty.
Mary Messicare of Millville, this is more of a suggestion. Our city has a listing of every property there is. Numbers have changed due to Millville entering into a nine-one-one system. It makes it very hard for agencies, whether it's a city's agency or an outside agency, to go to a particular property when the property number has changed, when a tax map has you as one address, but because of nine-one-one, your address has been changed to a different number. I myself recently came into that effect, and I can thank our city assessor, tax assessor, for helping me get that situation solved. But if it's happened to me, I wonder how many more people it's happened to within this city. Perhaps, maybe we need to take time, and if we can, maybe use some volunteers that are willing to give their time and their effort to go scoping through, double-checking, to make sure that whatever number the tax map has is accurate, instead of having a different number in its place. So when you try to find somebody, it's gonna be rough, especially if you're going to call out for assistance, because not everybody realizes it. But nine-one-one is a major factor in this nation, in this county, and in this state, and every other state as well. I'd hate to see somebody accidentally get lost within the system because the maps aren't accurate, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Seeing no one else, I would close public comment portion. Closing comments of commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt, go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out, and thank you for thinking about Officer Ramos, and that's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Suie?
Yes, I had the opportunity to tour the, well, I didn't get quite through the tour, Trinity Hope Center on Monday. I noticed Ms. Kears was there as well. So we had some great, I had some great conversations with some of the people there. They dispelled some of the misconceptions that I had about the facility and what they did, and I dispelled some of the misconceptions they had about me. In fact, one of them said, "You actually don't have two horns and a tail." So that was nice to hear. I'm going to finish my tour next Monday, so hopefully I can get through the whole tour this time, and I was a little pressed for time, but I spent about a little over an hour there. The only thing they asked about was twenty-five thousand dollars in Code Blue funds that we have not yet received from the county. Generally, we receive fifty thousand dollars a year, twenty-five thousand dollars we received, twenty-five thousand dollars we didn't disperse for Code Blue, and that is because we didn't yet receive it for the county. We did reach out to the county, and we didn't get an answer, so we'll continue to reach out. If anyone from the Hope Center is listening, please reach out to one of your county commissioners and see if they can get you an answer. That might be a little bit faster. And with that, progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Suie. Commissioner Kosseboon?
Alright, first, Mr. DeSantis, I will let you know that children are the utmost important thing in my life. I've spent forty years in education.
I agree.
But I will tell you-
Mr. DeSantis, it's her time to speak.
That the charter school, those children are bussed, and they're not going to any bus stop. They're going from the school to the bus.
Mr. DeSantis, it's her time to speak. You had your time.
If they are in walking distance, then usually parents will pick them up. As for the bus stop in front of this place where we have just approved, that's a public service bus stop. There is a parking lot, there is a big strip of grass, and then the parking lot, or the park, the bus stop sign for the adults. And I've not ever seen children there.
I will send you pictures.
So I will tell you that children are, like I said, we've taken everything into consideration before we approved this. It is well within a lot of distance from a school. So I think they need every requirement that we had. Also, let me see, my condolences to the Ramos family. I've known Rich and his brother as they were growing up. They were great, they were great kids. Mrs. Davis, in regards to the, I understand your concern about the money for the truck, but I will tell you that the current truck that I have on there is a nineteen ninety-something. It is rusted out, it is not really road-worthy for, and Millville has four emergency routes with only three trucks and no backup. So this is gonna be a great addition to the Streets and Roads Department, especially when we have a snowstorm, and we'll have to plow those emergency routes. And with that, I just want to say thank you, everybody. It's been, again, it was a wonderful weekend, and I hope you have, I have no sayings for you. I had it wrote down, and I forgot it. Mayor Rominick?
Thank you, Commissioner Kosseboon. Thank you for your words. Vice Mayor Watson?
I just wanted to speak for Richie Ramos. I actually met Officer Ramos a long time ago, fresh out of high school. That's all I wanted to be, was a police officer for the city of Millville. Family went through the city of Millville, that's all I wanted to be. Officer Ramos, you know, seeing him walk through the door, you know, he was always just a nice polite guy, he always said hello. He was one of the officers that always checked on me, make sure I was alright, walking down High Street when I was on parking enforcement. You know, when that guy walked through the door, you'd just seen a hero. So I just wanted to express condolences to the family, friends, and to our own police department for the loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watson. Tamara, thank you for the election, upcoming election information.
Yes.
I had no idea it was gonna be three pages, but, you know, thank you for all that, and especially for those, because I know a lot of people that aren't registered to vote, so that October fourteenth date. Now, can they do that just online, or do they have to call or be in person? You can answer. Both ways? Thank you. Brock, we allow cannabis in three locations, correct? Three zones?
And this has already been the planning board, and the planning board actually studied this, and they made recommendations. And I think this board actually decided on something that was more restrictive than what planning board allowed.
Correct. So we went through the motions, we all know this, most of the public knows this. We went, we, this commission gave their recommendation to the planning board to figure out where we wanted retail and delivery cannabis. Planning board got back to us and basically gave us free rein. We did not all agree with where that should be, and we construct that zone. It is zoned properly, it is zoned for that area, it is zoned for commercial. And, but, Mr. DeSantis, I do like that you're continuing to work with Mr. Bill Horn, and I'm excited to see that video come out of the big project and process that you have done on your property there on Wheaton Avenue and South Second, or, yeah, North Second Street. I got to meet, you know, Officer Ramos, you know, four years ago, coming in around City Hall, and, you know, I was able to know a lot of officers throughout my life, throughout the city of Millville, and as Vice Mayor said, and as a lot of people have said, you know, he was just always smiling. He walked in, and he was just, "Hey, how you doing? How's it going? How's everything?" His life will be greatly missed. I always enjoyed having conversations with him, especially just leaving City Hall, like these moments, and he'd be outside. My condolences to his family, to his wife, his kids, his brother. Just, he lived an awesome life, and I'm sad to see you go. Hope to see everybody out here at the Cut International Film Festival. I am looking forward to it. Like I said, it was a, it's always been a great time. I hope more and more people do show up, especially from the community, because there's a lot of outsiders that do show up to this event. So if you haven't bought your tickets, please do so already. It just goes back towards the Cut International Film Festival, and I hope we can still have it there at the Le Voie in the continuing years. Motion for a German.